Good afternoon. It is Monday on, good evening. It is Monday on March 13th, 7:30 on the dot. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note, we have all councilors present with the exception of Councilor Mahan. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of Emidu Bota, who was the lead chef for the Passus area bakery. He passed away recently. And so we'll take a moment of silence to recognize him, his contributions to the town of Bloomfield and his family. Thank you so much. Moving into announcements and presentations, I will just do B first if there's no objections, just because I think that's a shorter one than our presentation for the East Coast Greenway. Hearing no objections. Just wanted to give the public an update on the Town Manager Search. A search committee of the Town Council has been established to oversee the executive transition and the national search for our next town manager upon the separation of Stanley Hawthorne. I believe his last stay with the town of Bloomfield will be April 3rd. Similar to prior searches, I have appointed the following, the Deputy Mayor Davis, Councilor Joe Merritt, along with myself as mayor, two Democrats, one Republican. As we embark on the national search for our next town manager, we do this from a place of positivity and strength. Citizen engagement is a critical part of this process and we look forward to receiving extensive public input. The first step is securing an executive search firm, which will be identified by the full council. An RFQ or Request for Quote is in the process of being finalized and deployed by the HR department. Thank you. We have some guests here today, I believe, as well as our town engineer. And this will be a presentation on the Capital Region East Coast Greenway Study by Mr. Bruce Donald, East Coast Greenway, Southern New England.
Before we go, I have a quick question on the announcement.
Hold please. I see a hand. Councilor Kurt, and you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question in regards to the Town Manager Process. Just from a procedural standpoint, I don't believe or recall that the council actually met as a body to discuss what that process would look like. So just need some clarity on the procedural process because I think the body has a responsibility to come together to come up with a process. I'm not against the process, but the council did not have this discussion. So I just need a little clarity around that. Thank you.
To reiterate, there has been a search committee established. I've appointed the Deputy Mayor, Councilman Joseph Merritt, and myself as prior search committees have been established. So we are formed to create the process. We will look out for a search firm to begin that search. They will guide us in this process. The council will weigh in on what the search committee, search firm, and sorry, the search, the executive search firm will be. So that's the process we are embarking and engaging on that process. At this time, I don't have any additional information for you.
Yeah, but once again, I don't believe from a procedural standpoint that that process is legit. I think it's a process that has to be voted on by the governing body. I don't think it could be done outside of the council. And I think that's something that we need to get an opinion from the town attorney. Thank you.
Yep. As mayor, I have appointment power to establish the search committee in which I have done. Again, that is Deputy Mayor, Councilman Merritt, and myself as previous searches has embarked on. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I also had a question about that. You know, I understand this is my first term, but to my understanding, the council has to vote on that procedure and what that'll look like, that Town Manager Search. I don't know if Attorney Needleman can perhaps express an opinion on that. But you know, it would be greatly appreciated if he could at least give us an opinion on that.
I think he's on.
In my experience engaging in this council, this is my second term. This is how it's been done. And my goal is to make sure that there is even more citizen engagement in this process as early as possible. And Town Attorney Needleman, you're welcome to weigh in. But if you would like to do a formal opinion post this meeting, I know that that takes some time.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. I would like to review our charter and other pertinent provisions before I issue an opinion, but it won't take long.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go ahead and move on in the efforts of time to the next presentation on the Capital Region East Coast Greenway Study by Mr. Bruce Donald, East Coast Greenway, Southern New England manager, Mr. Mark Jewell, if I pronounce that right, and Senior Transportation Planner with Vanessa Hangan, Russeling Incorporated. And are they in a combination of in-person and online? Oh, so please. And Jonathan, our Town Engineer, I'm not sure if you wanted to introduce them. And just for procedural purposes, how long do we think that the presentation will take?
Okay, and
All right. Thank you. Welcome again to Bloomfield.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Share the presentation. Let me see your screen. Great, great. Thank you so much. So I'm not going to be up here long. I'm going to kick it over to Mark Jewell from VHB very shortly. But basically, we just wanted to come before you this evening to introduce to you what the Capital Region East Coast Greenway Study is and talk about the process and then how long this is going to take. And just sort of lay out that for you really briefly. All right, good. Let's move ahead. So just real quick introductions. My name is Caitlin Palmer. I'm a Principal Planner at the Capital Region Council of Governments. And I'm joined tonight, like I said, by Mark Jewell. He'll be doing the presentation with me tonight, as well as the Project Manager on the consultant side, Parker Swornton from FHI Studios, and I'm the PM on the CROG side. So just want to briefly touch on the fact that this is a multi-agency effort. So again, CROG is administering this study. And we are the ones that went out and did the Request for Qualifications and selected FHI Studio with their subconsultant VHB, as well as ESI eConsult for the Economic Benefits piece of the study as well. And that that process leading up to this point has involved many other agencies and organizations. So we actually have on our Advisory Committee, which Mark will touch on, we've got the National Park Service involved, actually. Obviously, State Department of Transportation, as well as DEP are involved on our Advisory Committee. And the municipalities of actually the town of Simsbury, Bloomfield, the city of Hartford, and as well as the town of East Hartford. Because this study, as Mark will talk about, is going to cover all of those communities. And then we also have some non-government organizations, especially the East Coast Greenway Alliance. Obviously, this is the East Coast Greenway route that we'll be talking about for the purposes of this study. We also have Riverfront Recapture and the IQuo partnership. And then lastly for me, just touching really briefly about CROG and what we are, I don't want to belabor the slide, but just to kind of give a little bit of information for those that might be less aware about CROG. We are the Capital Region Council of Governments, as I said. We are one of nine councils of government covering the entire state of Connecticut. Specifically, CROG covers the areas of Bloomfield, as well as the other 37 municipalities in the surrounding area. Specifically, our function as it relates to transportation planning, we are the MPO or the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's actually a federal designation. And it involves how we plan for and utilize transportation funds. So that's sort of why we're here today, because we are using transportation funds for the purpose of this study. And we've been involved every step of the way with CTDOT, as well as our members of our Advisory Committee as well, like I said. So Mark will touch on that. And just lastly, to say that I'm very excited to be here this evening to kick this project off for you. And the East Coast Greenway has been a priority for CROG and has been in our transportation plans for many years. So we're very excited about this project. And I'll hand it over to Mark.
Thank you, Caitlin. Again, I'll try to be brief. My name's Mark Jewell. I'm a Senior Planner with VHB, and I'm thrilled to be back in front of you. As it's great to see so many familiar faces here tonight. Real quick, East Coast Greenway, for those who might not know, it's this trail that goes from Florida to Maine. Kind of a big deal. And it comes right through Bloomfield. And it's over 3,000 miles long through 15 states on the East Coast, over 450 communities. Quickly, this is the East Coast Greenway in Connecticut, a little over 200 miles total. And here's the focus, this area here. As Caitlin mentioned, we're studying the East Hartford, Hartford, Bloomfield, Simsbury area to figure out if there's a reasonable and prudent way of getting this multi-use trail through these communities. Currently, if you go to East Coast Greenway Alliance's website and to figure out how you navigate Bloomfield, they would direct you to coming north out of Hartford. This is the route that they would take you down Park Avenue and out west into the Western communities. This is an on-road route right now. And the goal was to have an off-road facility through these communities. And going up to northern Bloomfield, this green line represents the multi-use trail that you probably are all familiar with that has been constructed or is under construction right now. This is a recent photo from the active construction heading into Simsbury. And we're working with Simsbury to connect down to the Farmington Heritage Trail. So there's a lot of opportunities here, a lot of constraints, but big picture, we're looking at environmental justice, economic benefits, mobility connectivity at the highest level and the health and wellness opportunities and benefits of promoting these types of trails. Now, we're looking at these four communities that I mentioned, and we're going back and reviewing. We're, like Caitlin said, this is a kickoff. We're right in the initial stages. So we're reviewing a lot of the work that's already been done by your municipality and Jonathan TC. And we're looking at the Crosstown Trail Study, the Complete Streets Master Plan that we were fortunate to be involved with in Bloomfield. And then in other studies and past research that have been done in East Hartford and Hartford and Simsbury as well. Just real quick, I won't belabor this, but here's a number of the documents that the study team are reviewing and becoming more familiar with to make sure that we can capture all the great work that's been done before, so we can build upon that. Environmental justice, you can see here just quickly, a good portion of Bloomfield is in the environmental justice target area. So that'll be something that is taken into consideration as the study progresses. Quickly, some of you are familiar with the large study that CROG did in Plainville in New Britain. And this is an excerpt from that study a few years ago, where they also looked at a major five-mile gap in a trail system there. And so as we progress through this study, we'll be identifying with the community's help, several alignment options. And those will be vetted and then run through an analysis similar to how the alternatives were analyzed in Plainville in New Britain with the guidance of the Advisory Council, which we'll talk about in a minute. Once we shortlist some of those alternatives, we'll do some visualizations to help help everyone understand what exactly we're talking about. And then we'll make some recommendations, short-term, medium, and long-range recommendations of how that could be implemented. Again, this is just the study stage, design and construction are further down the road after the study. There's going to be a significant amount of public engagement with this, with this study that CROG has implemented here. I'm just, just real, you can see there, we're going to be in each community several times. The first public workshop here in Bloomfield, that I hope everyone will spread the word and come and attend and ask your neighbors and friends to attend is at the end of the, end of April. So I'll get more of that in a minute. I also want you to know that CROG has a study website. QR code here, the website's there. But one of the coolest features about this website is they have a live, interactive user interface where you can zoom in and out of these four communities and see a lot of data that exists. And you can leave notes and email questions and if you can't sleep in the middle of the night, you want to study some trail stuff, we'd love for you to do it. But the website's always there, so I encourage people to use it. Hopefully, the town of Bloomfield will maybe put it on their town website. April 26th, mark it in your calendar now. I want to see everybody there. We'll hold a workshop at the Human Services Center on Park Avenue. And hopefully, we'll get a lot of good input and be able to really work through some of the concepts that are out there. Real quick on schedule, it's a 12 to 18-month schedule. We're here in the early stages under just looking at the existing conditions, reviewing all the past studies, and then starting our workshops and our public engagement. So it's just a quick summary of how that schedule goes. But hopefully, by the winter of '24, we'll be able to have some final recommendations from there. Real quick, the Advisory Committee, Bloomfield's represented by Jonathan TC and Kevin, and we'll continue to involve that committee regularly. I think they meet the advisory committee meets, is it monthly? Every two months. Thank you. And so we just had the first one of those meetings. And we'll be taking our lead from that Advisory Committee. So with that, please call us, email us, text me, whatever you want to do. This is exciting stuff, and I'm thrilled to be here before you, just to let you know that the study's getting started and would love to entertain any questions.
Thank you so much. This is very exciting. I understand this is the preliminary stages, but we are excited to build out the, our portion of the Greenway Trail as it connects to our neighboring towns. I do more of a comment. One or a couple of pieces that I saw missing in the presentation in regards to some of the areas that we're going to integrate into planning is the Hartford Mobility Study. So the Hartford Mobility Study is something that is going to impact the Bloomfield area. And so as much as we can integrate how that impacts this town, that would be helpful. And as our, our Town Engineer knows, our, the POCD or the Plan of Conservation and Development, I think that as we do outreach, if we could fold that into the study portion of things upfront, so we can kind of economies of scale with outreach, I think that would benefit all of the communities surrounding Bloomfield. Any other questions by councilors? Thank you so much for your time. We look forward to hearing more about this.
Thank you so much.
Moving into citizen statements and petitions. Community members have about three minutes to address the Town Council. Please state your name, your address. And if you are online, please raise your virtual hand. And if we could stop sharing the screen.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Taylor, and I live in the Ramble Stone Apartments. I've been a citizen of Bloomfield for 50 years. I came here in '73. I've seen this town go through a number of transitions. And I must say that at this point, I am quite alarmed. I realize that you folks have taken on the responsibility as so far as being council members. That's a very difficult job, and it's a thankless job. But the fact of the matter is that you have taken it on. That means in effect that you are the stewards of this community. As an outsider, it appears that we are floating toward absolute chaos. And I think that that is something that we must prevent. You're in a very special position. We're one of the few substantially majority-black towns that you inherited, basically, and sound financial shape. And that was pretty well-run. And I think that we are rapidly approaching the shoals. Now, running a town doesn't mean that you run it cheap, and you can't run it cheap simply because of who we are and where we are. And let me give you a primary example, the school system. You've got a Crackerjack Superintendent there, who basically was getting suburban numbers in Hartford. And he probably should have been the Superintendent of Hartford, but we won't go into that. We have a town, basically, that is a gateway town. Basically, people flow out of Hartford into Bloomfield. And they come in here because, basically, they've worked pretty hard, they've struggled, and they want to improve the lives of themselves and their children. But one of the things that you have to remember, and I'm going to make a kind of provocative statement, I may go over a minute or two, Madam Mayor, and I beg your indulgence. School systems, basically, because of the American education system, is predicated on students bringing in social wealth. If you don't have that social wealth, you tend to blow out in a system, and the system tends to blow out. That has been one of the issues insofar as Bloomfield is concerned. If you do not have students come in with social wealth, you have to expend funds to get them to where they need to be. That's basically the issue that your superintendent is facing. I don't know the numbers, but I would bet you that over half of your students are getting free lunches or whatever else. We have a large majority, we have a large number of students who basically probably have special needs. I bet you it's greater than 10, 10%. The other thing
You have 30 seconds, sir. Thank you so much.
The other thing, basically, is that foster kids, that's a cottage industry in this town. And that also places great stress on your system. Those things are going to have to be funded. But everybody wants to cut. I will end on this note. All I'm saying to you, basically, is that if you're not careful, you're going to lose this town.
Good evening. My name is Gail Jordan, and I live at 102 Walgett Hill Road in Weathersfield. I am the Bloomfield Education Association President and an academic interventionist at Carmen A. Race Intermediate School. I come before you this evening to encourage you to support the Board of Education's proposed budget. I have been a loyal educator to the town of Bloomfield for 16 years. And I am very concerned about how not supporting the proposed budget will have a negative impact on our students and staff. We currently have a very in-depth portrait of a graduate plan of excellence, which includes a comprehensive strategy to ensure that our students are academically, socially, emotionally, and technologically equipped to become civic-minded and service-oriented citizens. The implementation of this comprehensive plan is multifaceted. This is what it looks like in our schools on a weekly basis. It looks like our dedicated teachers and other support staff learning about and implementing new forms of curriculum that challenge our students. It looks like teachers working in data teams to identify students that are performing on, above, or below grade level and deciding which domains need to be prioritized to support student growth. And it looks like school teams composed of teachers, interventionists, administrators, psychologists, and social workers needing bi-weekly to review student scores and goals to make sure interventions are being put into place to support students both academically and socially emotionally. It also looks like our teachers providing service to students with special needs by modifying curriculum and creating individualized education plans to ensure that all students' needs are being met, no matter what grade level they perform on or any varied abilities they may have. These are some of the tasks our educators do on a regular basis. This list has dramatically increased and has become more challenging since the pandemic. Our students have come back needing more in many ways. As the world has seemingly returned to normal, our classrooms have not. Supporting anything less than the 8.8% that the Board is proposing would put a major halt to all of the work that we have put in thus far. Anything less would equate to cutting more teacher and support staff positions, which would certainly mean an increase in class sizes and less individualized supports for the neediest of students. As you all are aware, the teacher shortage is a real issue. Bloomfield should want to attract and retain high-quality educators in this very competitive market. Please keep Bloomfield salaries and benefits attractive, competitive, relevant, and at a comparable rate to surrounding towns. Please support our students and teachers by supporting the proposed budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, David Barham, and to our Mayor Wong and members of the Town Council, it's a pleasure to be here now that I'm able once again to start speaking in public. And I'm here actually as a liaison to a group of volunteer citizens who started getting together a couple of months ago just to discuss issues in town and to try and come up with suggestions for our elected officials on how we can promote unity, respect, cooperative relationships, collegial governance, to try and create a smoother system than what we've seen over the last couple of years. And so while we were discussing these ideas, which we have not yet presented to anybody, and a concept came up regarding the Town Manager's selection process, which obviously is timely, as noted, you know, by Mayor Wong this evening. And so we were concerned because in approximately four years, we've had three Town Managers, which is historic in Bloomfield. Up until that time, we have had Town Managers who have served this community for 10 or more years at a time. We were considered a community that was able to attract the best and the brightest among Town Managers who applied without the state and really around the country. And we think that that's a necessary ingredient for this search to make sure that we get the best people who can acclimate themselves to our community, because Bloomfield is special. And we have our own needs and concerns, and we tend to be hands-on, and we ask a lot of questions, we demand information, we like to know the status of things. And we need to find a manager who's able to acclimate to that kind of situation. And so what we're proposing is very simple. It's basically a concept that says the Town Council should appoint a Citizens Committee to work with the Council's consultant, which the mayor spoke about this evening, and to assist the consultant in reviewing applications. And hopefully, the consultant would submit to the council, as you dictate, no less than three finalists that you would choose. The Citizens Committee is only there to work with the consultant as an advisory group to help vet these applications, to make sure that we get the best pool of candidates possible. We hope that the ideal of appointing citizens faces a support from the council. And we believe that these citizens should And we believe that these citizens should have experience and knowledge in personnel, perhaps previous experience of selecting a town manager, a CEO.
30 more seconds, sir.
Diversity, and I'll finish up. And they work in confidentiality with the group. That group, then, through the consultant, conveys the applications to you. And obviously, you have full control of the process. The council appoints the consultant, the Citizens Committee, and obviously, you select the manager. The idea is to minimize conflict and make sure that this has broad consensus among our community. And so, listening to the description tonight, I believe, and I, you know, ascribe good intentions that to jumpstart this process and get it going, the committee that the mayor wishes to work with will go ahead and create a process for council approval, which incorporates this Citizen Committee so that, again, we can remove any conflicting politics. And again, our goal should be the same, which is to come up with the best town manager.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much. And you have copies of the proposal.
Thank you.
Don't count yet. Okay. Mr. Shulman, 8 Highledge Road in Bloomfield. Good morning, everybody. Very happy to see that the mayor has taken the bullwhite horns, as they said, and talked about the initial process. With all due respect to my friend Dave, I'm a member of the few people that are meeting, as he mentioned. The idea that he proposes is not extraordinary or unique. In other words, it's not something that has been created that's going to change the world. What he's simply talking about is what we call citizen participation. And it's strictly advisory. As a matter of fact, the presentation that was made talked about an advisory committee. Advisory committees have been known in all different sectors. Furthermore, what is proposed is logical and common sense. I haven't read it, but I understand that the manager has presented a pretty good budget to the council. But as many years as I've been involved with this, it's never, no manager has ever done it so that it's perfect. The council just says, yeah, whatever you say. As a matter of fact, there's always a lot to talk about. As a matter of fact, you've heard tonight, I guess from some people, about the Board of Education, the Board of Education budget. So the council will have its hands full. And furthermore, my understanding, and I can be wrong, that the manager is, I guess, leaving in about a month or two, or something like that. And yet, the budget process may go on into April in your considerations. You need all the help you can get. So what is simply proposed is a Citizens Committee, as they've said, to work with the search entity that you choose. They do nothing more than to review all the applications that come in. And as a matter of fact, one thing that experienced people know, I'll tell you one thing, when we had a manager, Louis Chapman, who was with us almost 20 years. And he came as an assistant town manager, I believe it was in Charlottesville, Virginia. Because the manager down there had a reputation of training the assistant town managers in Charlottesville to go out into the world and become town managers in other places. And these are things that period people who would be on this committee would know. It's very important for the business climate to have somebody from, say, the Chamber of Commerce representing the business community. It's also important to have major groups represented. We're talking about five, six, seven people. That's all.
30 more seconds, sir.
Of people who are experienced in selecting town manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Kevin Goff, 5 Bear Ridge Drive. I do ask the mayor's indulgence if I exceed my three-minute time limit because I feel it's necessary to respond to some of the information. And the public should know what has gone on in the past relative to the upcoming town manager process. For the record, I was a member of council when the past two town managers were chosen. And I've lived in Bloomfield for over 30 years. I believe that citizen participation in the manager selection process is essential. However, participation should be open equally to any citizen who wants to participate, not an appointed or especially a self-selected committee. Selection of the manager job is the job of the council. In fact, along with the annual town budget, hiring and the annual review of the town manager is the most important task you have. Until final candidates are selected, involvement of the public would hinder and disrupt, not aid that process. Now, once prospective town manager candidates are chosen, it is vital that the public be involved and that their opinions are weighed by the City Council in making a decision. I want to point out, and this is what's important. In the first town manager process I was involved in, the selection process, where ultimately we hired Robert Smith, there were two rounds of that selection process. In that process, first, there were meet-the-public events with town manager candidates. Second, there was participation by the council in those events so that they could see the participation of the town manager with the public. Third, after those meetings, there was a period of a week or two, I can't remember the exact length, I didn't go back and look, where we, the members of the council, received feedback from the public, all of the public, not a special advisory committee. As a result of that, we were able to get feedback and choose a town council candidate. I would also point out that I believe town staff had a chance to meet all the candidates and respond to them, and council got to weigh that information, too. Now, how did things change with the second town manager process? Well, at the end of the day, at the final hour, yes, they did get to meet the public. But what happened in that process was the public was not allowed, the council was not allowed or did not give time because we interviewed them alternately with the public to see them respond to the public. So we couldn't see how they interacted. And secondly, we had to make a decision the night of the second interviews. We had no time to wait to get any feedback. I protested this at the time, but those council members who orchestrated that did not allow for any feedback in the process. I'd also like to comment on the earlier process, which Mr. Shulman, as mayor, I think, was involved in after Louis Chapman resigned from the town manager position. That town part that we were told-
You have 30 more seconds, sir.
Right. We were told that the public would be given the chance to meet those town candidates, the town manager candidates. However, what happened is we got up and read in the Hartford Current that the council was meeting, and they were going to offer the job to the interim town manager because they had made the decision with no public, no public input, that that was the best decision they could do. I find that, I find it crazy that now he and Mr. Barham will come in and say, well, we can't possibly do this without public involvement, even though that happened with Mr. Schenk. So I also asked the question, are Mr. Barham and Mr. Shulman planning on going to the next Board of Education meeting and asking for a special committee to be appointed for the next selection of the next school superintendent? Is that the plan here?
Thank you, sir.
You can't address other-
Thank you, sir. Please quieten the chambers. Please, our next speaker. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Again, this is me coming before the council, Madam Chair. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. This is the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks, and in our bid to present our third opportunity to come before you to express gratitude for this opportunity. It's very humbling to come before the board. We had a good opportunity to have a good conversation last week about our request and some of the things that we've done. But I kind of feel like I think you've heard from me enough. I came with my family today. If you're here to support the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks, please stand up, please. This is my town. This is my squad. These are my youth. These are my coaches. This is the teachers. These are the people that are responsible for leading the next generation of youth in this town. And as you can see, as a result of our program, they do come back home and take care of town. I grew up in Bloomfield. I came up as a Bloomfield reader. And when I moved away and got my education, I knew my destiny was to come back home and take care of town and take care of my youth and to take care and raise my family in this great, great, great town. Youth athletics is what Bloomfield does. Football is what Bloomfield does, and we produce great citizens. The program has so many different fundamental aspects that include mentoring, education. I have some of my frat brothers here. We have a lot of coaches. We have a lot of teachers. But again, I just wanted to come up here and thank you and thank my staff for coming out here on a rainy Monday night, just like we do in practice. We just had some exercises in the Carmen A. Race. Thank you to the town for allowing us to do that as well. But I just wanted to come up here and express my gratitude and have an opportunity for you to hear from some of our youth. So thank you again.
Thank you. Madугa.
Good evening. Third installment. Can you please open that presentation? Last time we were here, we presented in front of Economic Committee. A lot of numbers were spoken about, but I came to bring real numbers. We have- That's fine. You could just start with a spreadsheet, Excel.
We'll allow one item if it's quick.
Yep. So, well, I'll speak. I don't know if my time's still working. So I brought back row numbers. As we said, safety is our number one concern. As you can see, we have our different staff here. Our biggest concern was helmets. Perfect. So I brought back, actually, row numbers. So if you take a look, insurance. If she slides over a little bit more. Insurance for this year is $4,500. Looking at our stadium system helmets, like I also mentioned before, at that price of $289.99, those are 2021 prices. Currently, they're at $379. So we're able to get a deal. Taking a look at our new jerseys, as we said, we brought before you our old jerseys, what we were playing in. We have brand-new jerseys, ready to go. All these invoices are loaded up with the Great Company Stadium system. In terms of our shoulder pads, top-of-the-line shoulder pads that protect from, that protect from any type of injury, heart-related, as we spoke before briefly, the Damar Hamlet situation. If you scroll down a little bit more, because I don't want to have three minutes. Slide to the right. Right. Slide that to the right. All right. So that number you'll see as a total, as we came before the Economic Committee. Originally, we had the $80,000 ask. It was proposed that somewhere at around the $40,000 range would be sufficient. Totaling all these expenses, our immediate expenses, were about $56,000, which leaves our deficit of about $16,000, which through community involvement, through donorship, through sponsorship, we'll be able to close that gap, especially with registration. One thing I would also like to note in my brief time is that I believe last statement was made as far as reaching out to the community. Our team personally reached out to 20 businesses in the Chamber of Commerce. I had one response. One. As far as the Hartford Foundation were given, we applied for that particular grant. As you could take a look, that grant only ranges between $500 and $10,000. That's not a definite, at all. So again, this is the reason why we had the immediate needs for our resources for this community, for our kids, for our chair. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
This is the future, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, my name is Brianna, and I live in 3 Angi Lane. And I wanted to say, I started a cheer team at my school, Metacomic, and we're doing very well. What inspired me to do this is cheering for the Junior Warhawks. It was very fun. The next time I cheer, we will bring it to the top. I hope you give us some money for this year because last season we did not have uniforms for our competitions. Thank you. You have a good day, everybody. Goodbye. Go Bloomfield.
Great job.
Hello, my name is Andre Sutherland. I'm a student at Carmen A. Race Middle School. I've been an honor roll student since fifth grade, and I've played quarterback for the Junior Warhawks. For the last two years, I've played for them. I'm here to say that playing for the Junior Warhawks has benefited me by making me learn to be a leader and go after what I want, by working hard and proving myself to my coaches and teammates. I will not be playing for the Junior Warhawks this year since I'll be going to high school. But I want to, but I want my little brother Adonis to succeed with the team for the next upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Jones, 5 Bear Ridge Drive. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I do feel compelled to make a statement just regarding the process around a search for town manager. I just want to say that I have real faith in the mayor and in the council and in the committee that she's appointed, consisting of herself, the deputy mayor, and the majority leader, to do a good work, you know, do good work in terms of some initial screening. That's been the process before. And I have faith in this council to, you know, do what needs to be done in terms of getting citizen input. I share my husband's concerns and, you know, anger, frankly, you know, particularly regarding, many years ago, when the, what was put out to the public was there would be public involvement, and we would get an opportunity, and then that got pulled. That hasn't happened. Despite the bumps in the road, the last couple of go-rounds, the problem ultimately wasn't with citizen engagement. The problem really was kind of dynamics and what happened after a manager was chosen. And I will say, I'm very sad to be seeing our current town manager leave. I think he has done an outstanding job. And I've said it before, as a citizen volunteer in town, I've never had someone have my back as much and support me in terms of my volunteer efforts. So I hope you will do a good job. I hope you will allow citizen input. But again, I hope you will allow all citizens to be involved and to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments in the room? Alton Grange. Alton, Alton Grange has the floor, sir. Alton Grange. We're doing some online. Thank you.
Mr. Grange, you have the floor.
You have to unmute yourself, Mr. Grange. Mr. Grange, you have to unmute yourself. If not, we'll have to proceed with the next person. Lynette Easeman.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a little concerned with the fact that there are a group of people who think that they could do a better job than the council that we voted into. who think that, um, they could do a better job than the council that we voted into office in finding a new town manager. Um, I don't think we need an extra layer here, um, in, in this ma- town manager's search. Um, I believe the mayor has done her job in, um, selecting the individuals who will, um, you know, be the, the, help out with the search committee and all that, um, and we have a search firm that's going to, um, handle the bulk of this, um, and that's what we're paying them for. I'm concerned also because, um, at this high level of a position, most people want to keep their information confidential. They do not want, um, a lot of people knowing that they're looking for, um, employment. So I don't think it's a good idea to have, um, an extra, um, handful of citizens looking uh, at resumes and applications and personal information of people who are searching for this job. Um, I just, I, I don't think it's a good idea, it's not a good practice, um, and I think, uh, the town council that we voted, um, into these positions will do a fantastic job in making sure that we hire the right town manager this time around. Um, and that's my comment for that. Also, go Warhawks, um, asking that you please support the Junior Warhawks, um, in their efforts to expand their, um, football team and get the equipment that they need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Alton Grange, are you with us? Please unmute yourself. Mr. Marlon Thornton. Welcome, sir.
Hello, hello, how are you?
Good.
I just really want to say that we could really, really, really use funds to really help out our program for Bloomfield. Um, I've been in Bloomfield for, since I've been born with the Raiders from ninety, ninety, ninety-two, and I see what having a great, successful program has done for me and my, my career and my future. Um, set me up pretty well. Um, and, um, we're giving back to the children now and they, I want the same opportunity to forward to them. Um, and a lot of my career is because of football. So I don't really want to, that's the only thing that is, is, uh, from, but football was a huge part of it and I believe our kids deserve the same kind of opportunity that I had with my friends. Um, a lot of minority men have graduated college and got degrees through, through our football program. Um, Bloomfield got a rich tradition and you know, we're just trying to, I'm making sure and sweep, we, and kind of energy going and we appreciate everyone listening to us and, um, go Bloomfield, yep.
Thank you.
Have a good one, guys, thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Marlon. Mr. Alton Grange? I don't think his technical pieces are working. Any more citizen comments in the room or on the line? Last call for citizen statements and petitions. You have three minutes to address, I believe two minutes is the second round, two minutes, two minutes, sir.
Uh, Sid Shulman, again, Eight Highledge Road, I just want to correct apparently a misunderstanding of that, uh, uh, Mr. Goff has. When Louis Chapman left and Phil Shank was brought in, he had been thirty years of town manager in Avon. He, uh, came in and he started working here as an interim town manager. We get up the same search committee and I have absolute, by the way, complete confidence in the mayor and the council to pick the best person for the job. What happened in that case was that everybody was thrilled with, uh, Mr., the job Mr. Shank was doing and unbeknownst to me, a group of the council people got together and, and asked to have a meeting with me as mayor. And when they had the meeting with me as mayor, they said, "We are asking you to put on the agenda and we are asking you to present his name for permanent town manager to the council." And I think there were four council members who said that to me. So I was, I had respect for them, I, uh, did bring it before council and as a matter of fact, it was unanimous. So I just wanted to correct that, it is not a matter of not having citizen participation. Thank you very much.
And you can blame me for that.
Thank you. Two minutes, sir. Kevin Goff.
Uh, thank you.
And we have, we have some more citizen statements and petitions, some new signers, okay?
Uh, Kevin Goff, Five Bear Ridge Drive. I find it a little strange that, uh, Mr. Shulman just came up here and didn't contradict anything I said and said he was correcting me. When the town man, he is completely correct, Mr. Shank, who had retired as Avon Town Manager, was brought in as interim, all the search was conducted and what the, what was told to the public was, once the, was, once candidates were established, the public would have an opportunity to meet with the candidates and to judge them. That never happened. The first thing I read about with this agenda item on the, that the council was going to make Mr. Shank the, from, promote him from interim to permanent town manager was in the Hartford Current. I called several council members that day, Mr. Merritt being one of them, uh, I also called Mr. Hippolyte. That should never have happened. And the point I was making was to come here and talk about having citizen involvement as a necessary part of the process and then yourself derailing that seems a bit hypocritical. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Portia Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone, I, um, my name is Portia Jenkins and I live in Hartford, Connecticut, but in nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand fourteen, I lived at Four Berry Circle. My youngest attended Bloomfield High School and he played on the, um, football team, which brought in a lot of, uh, championships. I was also a volunteer and a board member for the Raiders and, um, team. And we started losing players going to Hartford, which is the reason why we went into Pop Warner. And Pop Warner gives the kids an even better avenue to extend themselves via going to championships, nationals, regionals, which CTYFL was not privy to. I am in fourteen years with, with, uh, volunteering. I'm one hundred and, I'm two hundred percent behind this program and we're just looking for funds to continue to give the kids, not only the boys, but the girls, the opportunity to get what any other kid is out there for them. Let it start here, we can't keep losing our kids to outside, um, towns when we have a football town that can bring in a lot of, um, talent both ways. So I'm just advocating for the Bloomfield Junior, for the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks and I thank the board for what they're doing. These guys and females have done a phenomenal job and I just want to thank you and let you guys know that I'm very appreciative of where you guys are taking this program and I look forward to seeing what can, what will be done and what Bloomfield, County Bloomfield will support us with. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for citizen statements and petitions. Mr. Alton Grange? Last call for citizen statements and petitions, last call for citizen statements and petitions. We are closing public comment, thank you so much. Moving into committee reports, let me just switch my notes here. The admin and education meeting took place on March sixth, two thousand twenty-three. We had several interesting items, uh, new business and old business, among them included the housing code, which is on the agenda later for action, so I will skip that part as we do have that on our business end here. We did get some updates on the economic development programs that I asked Goman New York to bring updates on, including community challenge grant opportunities, including a more robust TIF application process with appointing a tax incremental fi- finance board. We talked about where we are with the Development Commission in regards to getting next steps taken care of, which includes the urban grant plan. Among many others. From a new business standpoint, we requested some more information in regards to policy regarding an ordinance section nineteen dash fifteen, which is the overnight parking, which prohibits parking at a maximum of, which restricts parking to a maximum of thirty minutes between the hours of two and six AM. The next step here is getting the chief of police in our engineering department to provide some comparative analysis, uh, on history and seeing from a public safety and an ordinance standpoint, what type of policies we can do, including, uh, different zoning or different parking zones around town to update this ordinance that hasn't been touched since nineteen sixty-two. We also talked about, uh, food safety policy and we were happy to hear that the, uh, director of our public health department, Amy Kraus, uh, has adopted per the state laws, the FDA Food Code, and so that is undergoing transition throughout the entire state of Connecticut to adopt the FDA Food Code, some more information as that is adopted fully. We asked the procurement, uh, director to come in and report out on one of the follow-ups and recommendations on policy from our diversity, equity, inclusion study, and that includes a vendor rotation policy in order to essentially share the wealth around different minority businesses, small businesses in the greater Hartford area, specifically targeting Bloomfield businesses. We also talked about identifying workforce housing, uh, potential opportunities to bring to Bloomfield and so we've asked our director of zoning and planning to provide us with municipal owned land to potentially, uh, initially start some conversations with the state in order to build some more housing options for all. And I believe, I do have a BELC comment here, but just to report out, uh, the BELC contract has officially been updated and we have two new subcontractors and we will be splitting the CDC slots equally between Bloomfield Congregational Church and First Cathedral Church and the, uh, the daycares and children's centers within both of those entities. That concludes my report, moving on to public safety.
Thank you. Little disappointed, I lost my audience.
They're gone.
They wanted to hear public safety. Uh, anyway, I will be brief, uh, the public safety subcommittee met earlier this evening. Uh, we first heard from the, uh, police department and their report, uh, with respect to crime statistics, uh, there were, uh, are they coming? There we go. Uh, unremarkable with respect to, uh, prior months, uh, there were no homicides, no sexual assaults, no aggravated assaults, no citizen complaints. Uh, we had one robbery, four burglaries, uh, thirty-four larcenies. And again, the pattern that we're seeing with respect to larcenies are, uh, the majority of the larcenies are taking place in the Capaco Shopping Center area, uh, from Stop and Shop to Lowe's and Home Depot, but, uh, those seem to be the areas of concentration and one of our members asked the question of the, um, uh, police sergeant, uh, what efforts are we, uh, taking to, uh, curb some of those, um, larceny incidents and, uh, from what we understand, our public officials are doing the best, excuse me, the police officers are doing the best they can to, uh, do that, but we've heard over and over again that since the beginning of COVID, we've seen an increase in those numbers and so who knows when we'll see, uh, those numbers start to decline. Uh, there were six auto thefts, uh, again, there were at least one auto theft was from someone who left their car running, so again, we're reminding folks to please turn your car off, uh, leave your car doors locked, uh, there were four automobiles, uh, that were stolen from their, uh, private driveways and home residences, so again, please keep your cars locked. Uh, there, on the traffic side, there were forty-one, uh, motor vehicle accidents here in town, uh, last month, uh, four DUIs. We have the speed shield locations, everyone knows, we've got Winton Berry, Philly Street, Hunkus Avenue, uh, Maple Avenue and Woodland Avenue and, uh, most of those, um, speed shield locations are generated through solar, uh, speed devices, so that is, uh, something that we're very happy to see the town taking part in. Uh, we have our mental health clinician here in town and there were thirty-four crisis calls, uh, sixteen clients served, uh, three on scene responses and there's something that, um, uh, the town has invested some resources in and is paying huge dividends, uh, particularly, uh, we're seeing escalation, mental health crises and need, so, uh, we're on top of that. Uh, the Bloomfield ambulance, volunteer ambulance, uh, provided six CPR classes last month and there were forty-five people who participated in total. On the personnel side, with respect to the police department, uh, there are two current vacancies and there are three recruits in training, so, uh, they hope to have their numbers up, but again, we encourage all of our residents, uh, if you're interested, uh, please go online or stop by the police department to get some information because we're looking for really good candidates, so, uh, there are opportunities. Uh, on the fire, with respect to fire, both, uh, Blue Hills and the Center Fire District, uh, there's, again, uh, we have thirty-six calls for service in Blue Hills and thirty-four in the Center Fire District, uh, there were two structured fires, uh, which were related to single rooms and residences and there were no serious injuries. Uh, there was one car fire that, uh, folks may have heard about, I think it took place on the corner of Rockwell and School Street. Uh, again, uh, immediate responses by our fire and police departments and there were no injuries as it relate to that, as it related to that incident, uh, the Blue Hills Fire District is planning for their, uh, Juneteenth celebration that will take place again this year. And, uh, the Center Fire District, they had the ladder truck repaired, so that's, uh, back in operation and they will be conducting hazmat training, uh, this month. Uh, that concludes my report.
Committees on committees?
Thank you very much. Um, committee on committees, uh, the last time we met, we weren't able to take any action on the investors that came out. I think we had three meetings in February, um, India, and we were trying to get a special meeting this month. I believe three emails went out to members of the committee to no avail, so unfortunately, we will not be having a committee on committees meeting this month. There are investors from our last meeting that hopefully we can get them, um, voted on and submitted to the full council hopefully in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee had a special meeting on March seventh. Um, at that meeting, we discussed a number of items, um, including our twenty twenty-two audit and corrective action plan, the town manager, along with our financial advisor and our, uh, uh, folks came out and given us, gave us an update as it relates to where we are in the audit. As of right now, um, after we get out of budget season, uh, town staff has, uh, town manager has ensured that we will have a, a plan, um, and so I look for it to an update, um, at the next Finance Committee meeting this month. One of the things that I'm, I took from the discussion is that the financial advisors said that Bloomfield has one of the best, uh, credit ratings and financial positions in the state, which, uh, shows that we are as a county, um, and as a town staff, being fiscally responsible and managing our, uh, our reserves, uh, thanks to the, uh, good council of merit who always ensures that our reserves are at the level, um, so that we can, uh, sustain any rainy day. Um, also, um, we talked about the consider and take action regarding the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks funding, uh, the committee recommended unanimously, uh, forty thousand dollars to be recommended to the Junior Warhawks, that's on the agenda tonight. Uh, we also heard an update, um, regarding the status of the bonding, to go out, to do bonding for, um, the library, we understand that, um, our audit isn't complete and won't be, likely be completed till, um, late summer, and so the, uh, bond attorney and financial advisor suggested that when we delay, not delay, but we postpone our going out to the market till, uh, late summer, early fall, and we just use the liquid cash that we have on hand, uh, to fund the early portions of the projects and then when we go out to bond, reimburse ourselves, um, our town is in a very good position to do that, to have no impact on the taxpayers, so I'm proud of that. We also, um, discuss, um, and table the items for the Junior Soccer Association, it will be coming to the Finance Committee, um, not next Monday, the twentieth, right, India? The twentieth will be having that meeting. Um, and then we heard an update as to the, uh, banking institutions and interest on what we're getting from the liquid cash, on the money that we have in the bank, so the savings, um, and, um, we hope to get a recommendation from the town staff on, um, where we should move that money. And we hope to get a recommendation from the town staff on where we should move that money. One of the accounts, one of the options was moving it into the Short Term Investment Fund at the State of Connecticut, the Treasurer's Office, which is, the acronym is STIF. It had a very good return rate for our financial cash. And so we're hoping that the finance, interim finance director make the recommendation to move some of that money there so that we can make money off of our money. If that makes sense. And then we have public comment and that concludes the report. I look forward to everyone coming out to the next Finance Committee on March twentieth at six PM. Thank you. And that concludes my report. Six, excuse me, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Land Use and Economic Development Committee met last Tuesday, I believe. And we had several things on the table that are already up to council level, but we conferred about the development or recent development of the Bloomfield Development Authority. They have met. They seemingly are moving forward to make some great decisions relative to our town. And so we're really excited about bringing them on board. There's seven members. And they are experienced. And so we're looking forward to their work. We also discussed the Small Business Loan Program, which was recently submitted for CIF approval. We're hopeful that we do get funded. It's a total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would potentially be available for startups as well as small businesses in our community. Additionally, there is another, I'm not sure if I'm getting the, the name right, but the Housing Rehab Program that was submitted as well under CIF. And we're very hopeful for that. This is to give property owners an opportunity to do some limited rehab work on their homes. There's a lot of seniors in our communities that love their homes, but do not currently have the funds to make these changes. So we're hopeful that we get that funding. Goman in York was very involved in providing the updates for, for this information. And then we also talked about TIF, T I F, which there is interest in doing some development along the Blue Hills Avenue area. And we're very hopeful that we'll be seeing some movement in that very shortly. And that concludes my report. Oh, I'm sorry. I did intend to make one other announcement. There's a there's a company in Bloomfield called Comatics and they are doing a job fair this Wednesday. Now, I don't know based on whether what will happen, but they're looking for a lot of machinists, CNC machinists and other individuals in this area. So we're, we're really hopeful that any and all come out. It's between one and five o'clock. One and five o'clock on Wednesday. It's Comatics and they are located on Blue Hills Avenue. We have a number of manufacturing firms in this area and we're going to try to bring you information that provides opportunities for folks to to secure employment. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The Gulf Committee met on March eighth. Not much to report. We've been seeing some strange weather here in New England. I know the course opened in February, but we're still bracing for another snowstorm tomorrow. So not much to report from the Gulf Committee standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Community Services will be meeting in April. There may possibly, it's not planned as yet, but there may possibly be a special meeting at the end of this month following some of our planned budget meetings. And what will be discussed is the Summer Bridge Program that was provided last year through funding from the state, funding from Capital Workforce Partners, excuse me, and funding from the town. Most recently, Capital Workforce Partners sent a letter to the town indicating that the governor was given an additional ten million dollars for summer youth employment activities. Some of them would be also geared toward year-long opportunities for youth as well as opportunities for youth to work in businesses. So we're hopeful that over the next several weeks, that we will communicate with Gilwin University, some of the local manufacturing firms in Bloomfield, and the Bloomfield Board of Education. So we're, we're hopeful that we can provide enough interest and ideas to land some of that ten million dollars in Bloomfield. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trails? Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Briefly, Trails Committee met last Thursday. And you heard tonight from the CROG group, which we're very enthusiastic about because it's taken a while for them to get going, but now it looks like they are getting going. And we're most interested right now in a meeting that's happening in Terriffel, Terriffel School on the thirtieth of March. Because for us to connect to the Simsbury Trails, we need some work done in Simsbury. And you all know about what's going on on one eighty-nine, all that activity to get through the gorge to Terriffel. So our bike path this summer will be going through the gorge to Terriffel. And people have a lot of questions about that. And it's created a lot of excitement, both in Bloomfield and in Terriffel. So our trail won't be a trail to nowhere. It will be going somewhere. And after that, so that will be done by this summer. And after that, the next section is going from Terriffel to Simsbury, which hopefully will go directly over. But there's a lot of NIMBY problems with people not wanting it going by their house. And it's not unusual. They, they don't want it. And then when it comes, they love it. So I love it going by my house. And so do other people who, who were less enthusiastic about it before we put it in. And then they say, oh, this is wonderful. It's the, the bike path is a good neighbor and no one should not want it in the neighborhood. It actually creates neighborhoods. And so that's coming up on the thirtieth in Terriffel School. Also, we talked about the Cross Town Trail from Library to Library, which hasn't, we've applied for funds for that and haven't heard back. But the thinking is probably it won't get accepted unless we get a some plans for it. So it's a, it's a shovel-ready project and we, we need to think about that during budget time, or maybe we can switch some things in the capital budget over to that. Hopefully. And, but that's about it. So thank you. That's, that's, that's our committee.
Thank you. That concludes our Subcommittee reports. Moving into council business, old business. Item twenty-twenty-three dash forty-seven, consider and take action regarding adoption of Schedule Twenty-Twenty-Four, budget meetings revised. Essentially, we are scooching these meetings up to begin at six-thirty as opposed to six o'clock, which is a nice compromise from our normal meetings at around seven, seven-thirty. So I have a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman to Beethan Brown, seconded by Council McLaren. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Any opposition? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving into item twenty-twenty-three dash fifty-eight, consider and take action regarding funding for the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks Football and Cheer Program. Councilman McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. At the March seventh Finance Committee, it was, as I mentioned in my committee report, it was moved by Council Harrington and seconded by Council Merritt and voted on unanimously to recommend to the full council approval of a forty thousand dollar allocation to the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks and Cheer Program. I move right now that we allocate forty thousand dollars from council contingency to the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks Cheer and Football Program.
Moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Council Harrington. Any discussion? Council, Council Curtin?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I have a, a motion that I would like to put on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor at this time?
A friendly amendment, a friendly amendment, sorry. Yeah, the amendment is for us to use the ARPA funds to give the the football team the eighty thousand that they were requesting. I think the one point six million dollars that we did receive, let me just back up for a second. The town, the community received six point two million dollars in ARPA funds. The town used four point six million so far. The council put together an ARPA committee that basically ended their work last Thursday. I attended that meeting and also convey what I heard through the Finance Committee. And I believe that one of my concerns were for it to come through, come out from the town contingency. It sets a really bad precedent. Why? I'll explain. For instance, let's say there's another community group that came into the council. It puts us in a very predicament, in a sense, where we now have to respond. How do we pick and choose which group to give funding to? I believe the ARPA committee with the one point six million is a clean way to give the football team the eighty thousand that they were initially requesting. And they're finished their work. They're coming back to the council. They actually send us the documentation of their work that they provided. I spoke to some members of that committee. They said that this is a perfect use of the funds. So I would recommend to this council that we basically have the funds. We have it. We can sign off on it for eighty thousand to go to your initiative. And that, to me, will make you whole. And everyone will win. That's my friendly amendment.
There's a, there's a friendly amendment. Let me try to wrap that up. There's a friendly amendment to, instead of its council contingency, for the forty thousand dollars to come from the ARPA funds.
Eighty, eighty, Madam Mayor, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand dollars.
That's what they came in for. And the recommendation that came from the Finance Committee was.
So although I agree that the upper funds should be used for the community benefit, the town manager currently has the one point six million dollars in his annual budget. And so if I do accept that friendly amendment and we vote on that, Stanley, how does that affect the proposed budget that you're going to present to the full council? Per the charter? And does this qualify under the IRS rules? For, for an acceptable use of the American Rescue Act. So there's a number of questions that I don't know the answer to. So if you can share that, we can hear from the local expert, I think that'll help us.
Madam, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I haven't presented the formal budget to the town council at this point, and you're taking a current action. We've talked about reserves already today. We've also talked about the town council contingency. So it'd be a matter of taking it from one source and moving to another. Certainly would not be reflected in my budget that has gone to Brent at this point, but that's an easy adjustment if the town council decides to to go there. The budget at this point would have to be balanced with additional reserves from from the town of Bloomfield.
Well, I accept that friendly amendment then. If that's the case, and then this council just has to figure out how to close the budget gap when we get to budget.
And, and just a point of clarification, actually, the funds can be used for that. Because if you think about it, the football team experienced hardship through COVID and so on. So I think the use of the funds will actually be in line. And I did do some of my research and that was accurate. But we could get some additional opinion from the town attorney or so on, whatever the case may be. But I think this is a good use of the funds. It goes directly to the football team. And at the same time, we don't have to deal with the whole notion of we took it out of council contingency fund, what's going to happen when the next group come? This is clean. And the football team gets the eighty thousand dollars that they need for our young people. Tonight was very compelling to hear the young folks come out. I also believe we're going to hear a lot of that through the budget process for the Board of Ed, for our student. We need to start taking care of our kids in the town of Bloomfield. So I'm happy that you accept that friendly amendment, Counselor.
I would ask us to approve the funds contingent upon feedback from our ARPA consultant. I think it's prudent for us to hear from our consultant that we have on retainer. Before we, before we allocate those funds, we, we have to, we have to be responsible and do some balance checks. There's a friendly amendment on the floor. So, so. Councilor Harrington, there's, it was accepted by Council McLaren. Council Harrington, do you accept that friendly amendment or would you like some more discussion to consider? The friendly amendment has been accepted, I believe, contingent upon the ARPA confirmation. Council Mahan?
So, two things. The, the amendment did initially include the feedback from, oh, my apologies. The amendment didn't initially include the feedback from the opera consultant, but I think that is a prudent thing to do. I also want to make sure that the eighty, I, I'm in full support of the eighty thousand. I think that it's going to go towards something that's going to benefit our community, benefit our youth who are the future of our community, especially as the youngest person on this board is something that, you know, is something that's very important to me as well. I, I do want to make sure also that with the eighty thousand, that it's going to put the Junior Warhawks in a position where next year and the year after that, the year after that, you guys won't have to come to council for that support. That it'll give you guys a strong foundation where the program can be self-sufficient without having to come to council. So I, I guess perhaps that's a conversation that I would have with the board after this meeting. But I, I'm hoping that that eighty thousand can definitely not only benefit our youth today, but also for years to come.
Deputy Mayor, and then Council Merritt.
Thank you, Mayor. I am fully in support of providing funding for the football and cheer programs. My only concern is that I am concerned about having a mandate tonight telling the ARPA committee and the consultant what to do. We haven't heard their findings in their report. And I think this is premature to tell the committee that's been working for months what they have to do with the, the money that they have been asked to come up with reports and report back to council. And we haven't heard their report. So I think it's a little premature to, to tell them what they have to do without hearing from them as to what they want to do, what their recommendations are. And I know that the final decision with respect to the ARPA funds belonged to council. But I just think that the process is a little backwards. We should not, in my opinion, tell them what to do until we hear from them. And if that's their recommendation, I, I'll be supportive regardless. But I just think that the process is not fair.
Council Merritt?
I was going to say, why you jumped very generously to eighty thousand from our forty thousand we're talking about. As we all know, that, that one point six million is part of the puddle of money that we have available to face the next year, one way or another. And we have a very daunting several weeks ahead of us. So to give away eighty thousand when forty thousand would look like it would do the job is a little much. I, I would recommend we stop and think about this and for a while. I, I would agree to this if, if you went for forty thousand, but subject to the committees being consulted, but I, I you, you've doubled what we're going to give and created double the problem. So I, I we have a tight year this year and we ought to be thinking about these kinds of money before we give them away like that. I, I, we all supported the forty thousand, but to jump it to eighty seems a little bit unnecessary. Thank you.
Council Mahan?
I'm just, I'm just a bit confused here because, you know, not too long ago, we were all on board for supporting the Junior Warhawks, for giving them the funding that they need. And now I'm hearing backtracking on that. It, it's like an emotional yo-yo with folks that are here specifically for this team. If we need to dial it back to forty, then by all means, but we have a path to give these folks the funding that they need to support their team that has done a phenomenal job with little to no support from the council, now it's our, we have the opportunity. We have the responsibility to help our, our constituents, our neighbors. I think it's on us right now, this is our opportunity to do exactly that. To give these folks the money that they need to help out our young people doing productive things, they could be doing so many other things. But they're serving on this team and they're actually, uh, providing a benefit to our community, I think, I'm all in favor for whatever the funds are from the ARPA funds, I think whether it's forty or eighty. I think that they're here, they've come to many meetings, they deserve the funds. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can put this to rest tonight.
Counselor McCleary?
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, so, um, although I hear the sentiments of, uh, my colleagues regarding the American Rescue Act, um, funds, I think the Deputy Mayor is absolutely correct. Um, and, uh, we haven't even adopted their plan, they haven't come to the finance the, the town council to present the plan, and if we as a body want to adopt the American Rescue Act plan, there's plenty of money in the budget for different aspects of the, the community, um, that who will benefit from it, and so um, I would like, um, to rescind the exception of that motion and support the forty thousand dollars, uh, pending pending the approval of, if we adopt this council adopts the American Rescue Act plan as presented and the consultant said is an acceptable use, then we will, we will give the additional forty thousand dollars to the Bloomfield Junior Warhawks, so that this forty thousand dollars that they're requesting right now, they can get in hand, order the equipment so that there's no delay, and then if the American Rescue Act Committee Plan is adopted and the consultant says that we can give them the additional forty thousand dollars, I think we have the ability to give them the forty thousand dollars. But there's a lot of questions up here from members of this body, and I don't want to, um, I don't want to risk not getting any money because we understand that equipment needs to be uh, ordered immediately, and so we are able to just give them the forty thousand dollars from council contingency. In my motion, I'm saying pending the approval and the adoption of the current American Rescue Plan as adopted by this council and approval of the consultant that the additional forty thousand dollars is, is, um, an acceptable use, then we will, uh, give them an additional forty thousand to make them whole, so there's no delay and that everybody gets what they want. If there is approval and adoption by this body, everybody's saying we, we accept the, the plan, if it's, this body adopts that plan and the consultant says this is acceptable use and everybody gets what they want and everybody wins. That's my, um, motion.
Uh, I agree, uh, I'm sorry. I agree with that, uh, motion as well. Uh, I do believe that the ARPA committee has spent countless hours working on this and it looks very favorable that they would receive that additional forty thousand, but I think it's inappropriate for us to delve into those funds right now until they come formally to present. Uh, I think the forty thousand is definitely, uh, approvable. And I think once we, uh, meet with the ARPA committee and they present, I'm sure that we'll also be able to provide the additional forty thousand.
Counselor Politis?
I haven't had the opportunity to look at the, uh, final report from the ARPA committee. But I firmly believe from the very beginning that the one point six million dollars would be, would be needed in this year's budget. Um, just because of the way we had structured last year's budget and the things that we did with the ARPA funds last year. I, I really, and I, however, I do not have a problem with taking the eighty thousand dollars from the ARPA funds to fund this because I believe that at the end of the year, we would be able to have the council contingency wrapped into next year's budget if we don't touch it for anything else. Um, we may need some of that for, to start the town manager search, we could probably use some of the town manager's contingency to do that as well. I'm not sure, but, you know, I really believe that, you know, we'll, eighty thousand dollars in a one hundred and five million dollar budget is a significant amount of money and we, we would be able to find that money when budget comes around. You know, if you wanted to split the difference and call it sixty, you know, to calm everybody down, then that would be you know, what I would say is a possibility as well, you know, because that covers the fifty-six thousand that they talked about for all of the equipment needs they had. And they can use fundraising for the rest of their money. And if, I, on a personal note, if one of you gentlemen could give me your telephone number, I'd like to contact you afterwards because if you're working with the chamber and they're not getting, and people are not responding, I know quite a few people on the chamber, I could try to grease some wheels for you if I, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, just, just a, just a point, just. Yeah, just a, just a point of clarification, the actual ARPA committee was formed to provide a recommendation, not an adoption of any form. So it's not an adoption, it's a recommendation to this body to say, what are the categories based on response from the community, and I actually had an opportunity to go through the, the report that was sent to us, and this use of the funds to help the football team will be in line. So what I would, once again, what I'm trying to avoid, what I'm trying to avoid is the perception of us taking it out of the contingency. My concern is where do we draw the line when another group come in? Because there are multiple needs within the community for funds. And we said that presidents to say we're taking out a contingency, what do we say to the next group? I think this is a clean way. I believe that we already used four point six million of that, six point two million that we received. And I believe that funds will be in line, so what I would encourage my colleague to do, my colleagues to do, is to go ahead and pass that tonight and basically get an opinion back from, uh, the, the consultant or whatever the case may be. And trust me, I attended the meeting, I asked those questions and they said it's right in line with what the ARPA was intended to, to be, so I will ask my colleague to go ahead with that and put it on the table. We vote on it, and if the consultant comes back, we could quickly make an adjustment, but I believe based on what I heard from the consultant on Thursday, those funds will be right in line and we get away from taking it from the contingency and that whole illusion of why we pick in this team or that team or whatever the case may be, I think it's clean, you get the money, the funds are there, we can sign a check tomorrow or the end of the week, and it can get to the group to go ahead with their work.
Clerk of Council, can you please repeat the motion that's on the floor, and then I'm going to go ahead and weigh in?
Okay, so the motion that Council McCleary made, he rescinded his original motion, the motion states that he would support, uh, forty thousand dollars from council contingency at this moment until the plan from Harper is adopted by the town council and the consultant says is a subtle abuse of funding, the additional forty thousand dollars will come from Harper funding.
So I'm going to weigh in here, I've, I've listened to, uh, most of our colleagues weigh in and I am I came tonight fully prepared to support the motion that is prepared for us that we discussed in previous councils of the forty thousand dollars. I was the one who appointed the ARPA committee. With pushback from members of this council. But I do firmly believe that this full, the full body has seen the value in the ARPA committee. They have done serious amount of work. Chairwoman Cindy Lloyd has done a tremendous job from a leadership position to reach out to the public and provide these recommendations that the council has not had a chance to review in public and weigh in. And so while I, you, we went to school together, you guys know that we fully support you. Uh, this is very important to us, the safety of our children. Uh, and we have to be prudent, fiscally responsible to make sure that the entire community is taken into account here, so I do agree with the motion on the floor, uh, to that as it, as it reads. Um, and with that, I'm going to call the question. And so we're going to go ahead and do do a roll call vote. Counselor Politis? Counselor Mahan?
Aye.
Counselor Curtin?
Aye.
Counselor DeBeethan Brown? Counselor McCleary?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Harrington? Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Great job, Junior Warhawks. Moving into the next item on our agenda. Moving into new business, consider and take action regarding the tax refunds, do I have a motion? Moved by Counsel McCleary, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harrington, any discussions on the tax refunds? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? The motion passes. Moving into item twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two, consider and take action regarding updates to Bloomfield Code of Ordnance Chapter Twelve Housing, uh, if I can have a motion to move to schedule a public hearing on March twenty-seventh regarding the housing code. Move, move by Councilwoman DeBeethan Brown, seconded by Counselor Merritt, any discussion? Here, just, Councilwoman?
Thank you, just a, a note, I know that the prior to all of us getting on council, I know that the Health District has been working on this since two thousand fifteen. Um, they've been working on adopting a plan for, um, housing, light and, and, and the such. And I know that we took it up in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, so I'm really glad to see that we are moving forward on this and I, you know, everything happens at the appointed time because you're only looking at one portion of the code and it's been opened it to, uh, to different portions of the code, so I'm very happy to see that this is going forward and hopefully um, our residents will come out to the public hearing on the twenty-seventh so that they'll understand exactly what the changes are to our housing code.
Thank you, and I want to say kudos to the entire task force, including our Director of Government Affairs, our Housing Director, our Town Attorney and our Town Manager and our Director of Social Services, we're really digging in, and our Building, uh, Officer as well, um, thank you so much, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions, any opposition? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Next up, we have the report from our Town Manager.
Mayor, I presented to the town council over the weekend a bi-weekly report. Thirteen pages approximately. Miscellaneous and comprehensive updates from across the departments of the organization. I also gave a sneak preview of the budget letter, not the budget itself. Uh, we've got the full report of the Town Manager, uh, and Community Building Leadership. Uh, for for sharing, um, and, and the, just, just the current, I mean, we should, um, in our weekly our weekly newsletter, uh, start to include this, uh, as a link as well, you and Brian should, uh, follow up on that.
Your bi-weekly report, sir?
That again?
Just to confirm, okay, no problem.
Yes, uh, but Mayor, I'm going to confine my comments and I'll keep them brief up to, um, some important aspects of the initial balancing of the budget or the proposed budget of the, um, of the Town Manager. Uh, recognizing that on March sixteenth, this coming Thursday, uh, the town council will start to go into every, uh, crook and cranny of the, uh, of the budget, uh, and certainly will be in the budget document, um, as well that you'll receive just as soon as we get it back from the printer, we went to print uh, today, missed our deadline on, on Friday, but we were able to get it to the printer and hopefully the bad weather will not cause any, uh, issues such as loss of electricity that is projected, um, across the state. Uh, there will not be a loss of, um, disappointed, uh, counselors and members of the community uh, because we have anticipated that this would be a very tight, um, fiscal year in the town council. In their wisdom, I've asked for forecasting, starting with, uh, as we presented the fiscal year twenty-three budget of what fiscal year twenty-four would look like and, um, I'm sure enough, it is a tight budget. There are major categories of the, of the budget, uh, the largest being the Board of Education and the town operations. Uh, in my attempt to balance the budget, which ultimately will rest with the town council, but the town council certainly had given broad guidelines, including, uh, the temporary, uh, tax reduction to give our neighbors relief, um, post-COVID, or at least most of, uh, the, the critical period of, of COVID. Recognizing in the town council voted that, uh, it would be a one-year relief and they actually went ahead and endorsed a mileage rate, uh, from that forecast of thirty-five point nine mils. I have balanced the budget based on that broad mandate from the, uh, town council. And I know that we've already, or that I've already received some reaction from what is only my proposed balancing of the budget and those major parts, five of which I will go over, of the Board of Education is the largest component of the town's budget, when you break it down into those five parts. And it is the only part of the budget that I'm recommending more than a one percent increase, in fact, for town operations. I'm recommending a reduction of three, uh, percent. So sometimes it's important to look at the full context of things, while one may look at uh, a less than seven or eight percent, uh, ask from the Board of Education, which I'm sure I've as well supported, uh, it does come down to the limited resources that we have to deal with each year. And compared to the rest of the major categories, uh, it is a significantly larger, uh, increase than, uh, the other that I'm recommending. As I say, town operations, I might be recommending a decrease of three point two six percent. We will get into the details that you know exactly where that is coming from, but those are never easy decisions, particularly when you look at an operation, um, or I should say a capital program of that we need, uh, as much as eighty-one million dollars in investment in our community. And over the five years, and we simply can't do more than we, um, put in this year of three point, uh, five million. We have a category of fixed charges, uh, which covers things such as insurance, solid waste. Uh, OPEB, uh, other post-employment, uh, benefits, retiree, uh, benefits. That is a six point four six percent decrease that I'm recommending. That service is a slight reduction, and that's based on just the schedule. Uh, Metropolitan District Commission, uh, is actually, um, a point two three percent increase, so I do appreciate that, uh, the MDC has been, um, responsive and responsible in, uh, recognizing, um, less than a one percent increase. So how is the balanced budget, it's but balanced by a combination uh, consisting of our major category, almost ninety percent of our budget comes from property tax, uh, revenue. The recommendation is a five point twelve percent increase, uh, half of which is attributable to the increase in valuation, which is a positive sign uh, for, of the community overall and, uh, of tax assessments, real estate, uh, motor vehicles, uh, and personal property, uh, the increasing. And non-tax revenue, which is, um, only twelve million dollars of our hundred and four million dollar budget. Uh, a two point three percent increase, we really don't control those, those are rent sources that largely come from the state, uh, but there are some, uh, uh, permit fees and uh, investment earnings and those things that are factored in. Unassigned fund balance at this point, uh, and by the time that I present the budget, I do. On assigned fund balance at this point, and by the time that I present the budget, I do expect to have a full analysis of how we end it June thirty-twenty-two, as well as what we're projecting for of June thirty-two thousand twenty-three. I'm optimistic that that will be different than last year, where fund balance was used for the first time, largely due to settlements on appeals from property types owners. But I hold that position in reserve until I get the details of that information myself that will be coming in the next twenty-four hours from the Finance Department. I have used revenue loss supplement, as it is described from the American Rescue Plan Act, of one point six million, slightly less than that, but we have a, some cost for the consultant. So the proposed tax mill rate, as I said before, is thirty-five point nine, but that was the direction previously given from the Town Council in its forecast endorsement. Budget workshops began March sixteenth, they will continue successively over the following Tuesdays and Thursdays until the end of March, based on the schedule that you approved. There are some interesting things that we want to share with you, including a benchmarking that we are introducing to the budget process this year. The staff has been very active under the leadership of a task force that I appointed. And we have come up with comparable communities in Rocky Hill, Weatherfield, and Windsor. And so literally each department that presents their budget, they will be comparing information that makes us different, or similar, or levels of service. And I think you will, interesting, in fact, I would predict that you will have multiple questions that come as each department presents. I won't go into the further details until we get to this Thursday on what the meaning of that exercise is all about, but I will tell you that I believe that the departments have learned a lot. We believe it will help us in building better community in the future and how we compare with these other very comparable communities, but I'm sure also that the Town Council will have questions on things such as, why do we have this level of employees versus others? And we will be prepared to at least give to you our best research on it. We will look at broader issues of comparison such as, you know, what our fund balance is or policy is. How do we compare to these other communities, or what your millage rates are? What is their combination of residential versus industrial and commercial valuation? Overall, I think the picture is favorable up to Bloomfield, but I will leave that ultimately to your thoughts, but I believe it will be an edifying consumption of data that we present up to you throughout the voting process. So that concludes my budget presentation for now, but so much more ahead, and we look forward to sharing it with you as the Town Council, as a very difficult job ahead of you. That may not agree with my recommendations, but you are the policymakers and I will respect whatever final determinations that you make.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I am very interested and I'm looking forward to seeing these new components in regards to benchmarking of how we compare to our surrounding neighbors or comparable communities, as well as a forecast. We've never operated with such a robust forecast to help guide our spending and our, you know, how we, how we look at that and the parameters in that, and so I'm hoping that that'll guide a lot of our discussion moving into the budget season. Counselor Curtain?
Thank you. I just have some, I just need some clarification from the Town Manager, since we have received his communication, I've been a little bit confused in regards to the process. So the Board of Ed submitted their budget to the town, to the council. Based on my experience, that number gets incorporated into the budget. Am I to understand that the Town Manager is circumventing that process and presenting a budget to the town and the council where he's reducing the percentage of what the board is initially requesting? I just need some clarification on that.
Counselor Curtain, as you well know, I presented clarification to your question on Friday evening. I will tell you that in my transmitting the letter, as of Friday morning, we were scheduled to go to print, I had not even received Board of Education's budget. I was literally, Ms. Howe can attest to this, I was writing my budget message and about to write that as of this writing, I have not received the budget of the Board of Education, which is prescribed in the Town Charter. The Town Charter also provides that Board of Education has until the end of March to present. There wasn't anything that I was going to complain about. But the Town Council also has a process and deadline for reviewing the budget. And the first requirement of the Charter is for the Town Manager to present a proposed budget. It has to be balanced. So there is certainly no attempt on my part override, but the Board of Education has presented. But I have a responsibility to this Town Council and this community to present a proposed budget. And that's what I presented. I have presented, as you will see when you receive the budget document, as I indicated in my letter, that the four requests that I received on Friday, as you all were informed by Assistant Town Manager, that we had just received those budget documents from the Board of Education. She didn't waste any time letting you know. And I have reported citing directly from the Chair's letter what their request is. I will tell you, when I received their request last year, based on having ARPA funds and what ultimately was my recommendation, I recommended full amount. Subsequently, the Town Council in its wisdom reduced that pretty significantly. I'm simply telling you that in order to balance the budget, I'm recommending an increase to the Board of Education that is far greater than I'm recommending even for Town Operations.
And, and just to, just to follow up through you, Mayor, the question that I pose to you, sir, is whether or not you have the authority to present to the public a number outside of what the Board of Ed has. And, and once again, we may have to get some clarification from the Town Attorney. And I think that's important to get that clarification from the Town Attorney. I don't believe, based on what I read from the Charter, that that you have that authority to basically present a budget to the community by reducing, because basically what you're doing is taking that responsibility away from the council and presenting a different picture to the public in a form of a budget. And I need just to get some clarification from the Town Attorney, whether or not you have that authority. And once again, I was not aware that you received the information late from the, the Board of Ed. That's something new, but I just need some clarification from my own understanding. I've been through this process quite a few times, and it's never been done that way. And for me, that is misrepresenting what the Board of Ed. And I don't believe that you have the authority to basically arbitrarily change that number to what you believe it should be. I think that's a council decision through a council process, whether or not the board gets what they're asking for or not, and whether or not what the town is asking for or not. So I think I need some clarification from our attorney, whether or not that process is in line with our charter.
First, let me be clear, Counselor Curtain, that I did not say that the Board of Education submitted their budget late. I said I received it on Friday, well within the timetable that the Charter requires, which is the end of March. The Town Manager, as I sent to you over the weekend, because you know that I often cite the Town Charter, because the first responsibility that is given to the Town Manager is to ensure that the laws and ordinances of the state, of the town, including the Charter, are followed. That's the responsibility of the Town Manager, which means that I've got to know the law. You often question me on these laws and ordinances. That responsibility actually isn't given to the Town Attorney. It's given to the Town Manager. And so I will assure you, and I can almost cite the Charter. And I know exactly what the Charter says with regard to the Board of Education. And on one hand, you're absolutely correct, Town Manager is to present the request of the Board of Education as they submit. Within the budget that you receive, that is done, that is complied with. It's also complied with in the letter that I presented. I also cited for you over the weekend that the Town Manager by Charter is responsible for presenting a proposed budget. And a proposed budget that isn't balanced, the Town Manager simply hasn't been responsible. So I'm not determining anything. I'm simply doing what the Charter requires, and ultimately, the Town Council will get the benefit of that information. And they will make the determination.
Madam Chair.
Um.
I still have the floor, Madam Chair.
Counselor.
I'm asking a serious question.
Excuse me, counselors. Counselor Merritt, you have the floor. We're gonna move on.
This discussion is, this back and forth is totally out of order. We, the budget's being presented to the Town Council, not the town. We will present a budget to the town, for them to approve or disapprove. But I, I, I think it really doesn't matter. We can change those numbers very easily during our budget process, and we certainly will. So I, I see this whole discussion as being pointless and totally out of order. Thank you.
Counselor Mahan.
Yeah, I, I must admit, it's, it's alarming how, how quick we are to dismiss the, the questions, concerns, or comments of our fellow counselors. We, we all have the right to ask, thank you, to ask as many questions, to air our grievances to not only our fellow counselors, but also to the Town Manager, who is ultimately responsible to the council. I, I, I am, I'm alarmed not only by how quick my fellow counselors are to dismiss the concerns of another council, but also how, how, even how quick the Town Manager is to, to basically dismiss the concerns or to, or to draw an issue with a counselor asking serious questions. We're all voted and elected to represent our constituents, and if we can't do that without any hindrance, then why are we here? It, it's very disappointing. It's alarming to see it, and I'm hoping that we can, like we should do in a democracy, become more tolerant of our fellow counselors, become more tolerant of the difference in opinions. We all deserve that right.
Counselor, do you have? We, we need to move on so that the discussion is out of order.
Finish my comment.
Please respond to the Town Manager's report.
I would like to finish my comment without interruption because it's a very important point.
Counselor, you're out of order at this point. Please stick to the agenda item on the Town Manager's report.
I am sticking to the, I am definitely sticking to it. This is, this is pertinent to the issue here. And I'm hoping that moving forward, we can respect and acknowledge each other's concerns overall, because it, it's alarming to see how we're engaging with each other and how, how quickly, how quick we are to dismiss a little and to hinder everyone's ability to speak freely here. It's disappointing, not only from the Town Managers then, but also on my fellow counselors.
I would ask that our counselors, all of us, caution our tenure and our tone towards each other. Counselors to Town Managers, Town Managers to Counselors. I cannot stand by and watch combative tones be hurled at our Town Manager, whether it via email or live during council meetings. And so I will take the lead in that and making sure that we respect all of our counselors, and I agree with most of my colleagues here when we do. But the combative tenure is too much, and we have to keep order, decorum, and respect for all that are on the line. The Town Counselors have no more flexibility to talk down or to or at any one of us, or to our employees in which we serve, or to our constituents. And so I did not mean to cut Counselor Curtain off, but we have to move on and have other voices in the line. Do you have anything else you want to say, sir?
Yeah.
To the Town Manager's report and the item on the agenda?
No, the, the next question.
I have a point of information as well.
Well, the Counselor Curtain.
My next question to the Town Manager, once again, it's, it should be public. When is the last day of employment with the town of Bloomfield?
April third.
April third?
April third.
Would you be in, in the office through April third, sir?
Counselor, I'm not sure where you're going.
My question, let me just repeat my question.
I have, I have answered. I have answered.
This is, this is actually, this conversation is out of order, and I'm happy to, you can take this offline, but this is actually out of order.
Point of order is a privilege motion that you have to recognize, so point of order, Madam Mayor. The manager has the liberty of the floor, so all counselors per the Charter and the Council Rules of Procedures need to allow the manager to finish his statement. He has the privilege of the floor. So Madam Mayor, I will ask that you allow the Town Manager to please finish his statement. Thank you.
I have been, been very liberal whenever I have used leave. And I have used leave during my almost two-year tenure very rarely. And I indicated, because I initiated the conversation, shared with this full Town Council, and I will tell you that my contract specifically specifies that the only people that I have to notify when I'm taking leave is the mayor and the deputy mayor. And each time I have shared that information with the full council, when I shared it with the mayor and the deputy mayor, I indicated in my communication to the Town Council on Friday that following your last budget workshop, that I intended to take leave for Friday, March thirty-first and Monday, April third. I don't believe I have any other obligation to share how I'm using my paid leave other than what I've already shared.
Any more questions regarding the Town Manager's report? We are not interrogating the Town Manager tonight, and I would like to move on if there aren't any questions pertaining to the Town Manager's report. This is out of order, and I'm moving on.
I will use my council comment.
I have, I have a question for the Town Manager as a relation.
Counselor McClary, you have a question on the Town Manager's report, and we are moving on.
Thank you, Town Manager, for your hard work and dedication to this, this community. Did you say you are trans, and I think I've read in your letter too, that you are transmitting what was presented to you by the Board of Education, but per the Charter, you have the obligation to, you have the sole responsibility to present a balanced budget to the Town Council. Is that correct?
Yes, and what the Town Charter requires is that the Board of Education present its full budget and all of the detail that the Charter specifies. The Board of Education chooses to transmit that in a budget document. And as soon as we received it, the Assistant Town Manager on my behalf informed the Town Council last Friday morning that it was available. last Friday morning that it was available. That is the charter requirement that the town council receive it. In my reporting information, I certainly include that information, just as the Board of Education requested. It is a separate issue on my also having to present to the town council per the charter a proposed budget.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the February 27, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Mahan. I have a second. Second by Councilwoman Debeethan Brown. Thank you so much. Moving on to council comments. Counselor Curtin.
Uh, thank you. Okay, there is a, there's a couple of things that I believe the public has to know. And um, I did not hear it through the Finance Committee report, but I attended and watched the last Finance Committee meeting. And basically, we were reported by our financial advisor and our bond counsel that Bloomfield basically for the second year in a row under this town manager is basically behind in presenting a audit, a full audit. That audit was due on February 28th. That has some serious implications to the town of Bloomfield when it comes to their bond rating, comes to our AAA+. This body here has repeatedly tried to defend this town manager. But the fact of the matter is, to not have a to not have an audit report done before a budget process, in my opinion, in my professional opinion, is a grave concern, and it should be to the, the residents of Bloomfield. Basically, there's no way you can decide or figure out your reserve without a full audit. Now, let's just say, in, 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 in the purpose of the library project going out for bonding pretty soon, let's just say we're taking funds from our reserve to meet those needs. After this audit report is presented after the fact, it could be way after the fact that after the town manager leaves the town, that is something that should be taken seriously by this body. It's something that could have serious implications, not only for the library project, but for the, the financial standing of this community who has, over the years, have received a AA+. And I believe that's at jeopardy as we speak. We haven't received a full report from the town manager on the audit. I would have expected through his report tonight, he provide us some clarity where we are from the last Finance Committee meeting. A matter of fact, based on the report from that Finance Committee, we should, in a sense, bring in some extra help for, for the, for the acting Finance Director. That, those are things that shouldn't just be reported to the mayor or the deputy mayor. It should be reported to the full council. The town manager has an obligation, as he stated on many occasions, to report to the nine bosses that he has in this council. But repeatedly, the town manager has been communicating with just the mayor and the deputy mayor, and that to me is wrong. That, that's my concern with, with the, the budget process. My concern is, based on the communication that we've received from the town manager, there are 19 days from today until the 30th, including the weekends. The town manager has reported to the auditors that he's leaving on the 30th, the financial advisors, and there's no way that the town manager in ending his contract with the town of Bloomfield, then have a right to tell us he's going to be on leave. I believe, and once again, I would love to have an opinion from our attorney, because he's here to guide us. What is the process? We have a responsibility as individual members of this body who were duly elected to ask the tough questions and get answers, and should not be prevented by other members of this body who is basically trying to speak on behalf of the town manager. I believe this is a serious matter. We're going through a process. The Board of Ed, we here tonight. I know my colleagues, they talk about supporting our youth in, in the community. Let's support education. Let's support our students. We cannot afford to be going backwards. I need answers. I need to know from our att- attorney tonight in public. I am sick and tired of the behind-the-scenes operation of how this council function. We are an elected body that's supposed to conduct business in public. And there's too many emails. It needs to be discussed in public, and we need to get opinions from our town attorney when requested. Thank you.
Counselperson Debeethan Brown.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a couple, uh, quotes. It's Women's History Month. Friends, sisters, mothers. When women affirm women, it unlocks our power. It gives us permission to shine brighter. I raise up my voice not so I can shout, but so that those without a voice can be heard. We cannot succeed when half of us are held back. So that, those are my quotes um, in honor of Women's History Month. I appreciate everyone that came out to advocate for the Warhawks. I'm hoping to see everyone out for the budget sessions, because I believe that the budget is extremely important. And I believe that it's going to be a little bit challenging this year. So I'm hoping that everyone that spoke will come out to the budgets. I'm a little concerned how we conduct business. It seems like we are just spreading gasoline and flicking matches at every opportunity we get. We are labeled. We are berated. We are disrespecting, disrespectful. It blows my mind that we have nine duly elected individuals who are supposed to be speaking on behalf of our town. And for some, if the conversation isn't um, palatable to others, labels are put on. Um, conversations are shut down. Innuendos are made. All for what? Personal gain? That means if we're doing it, whoever is I don't make noise when anyone is speaking. So I'm gonna ask for the same respect when I'm speaking. Because you're proving my point. Anyway, if we are up here fighting each other, we're not doing the work of the people that elected us to speak on their behalf. And for the last few meetings, that's exactly what we've been doing. Each person deserves the respect to ask questions, to speak their minds, to ask for dialogue. There's no reason for this. And while we think that we're looking good, we're all looking so bad. I say it all the time. You can't throw mud without getting your hands dirty. But then I ask us to do some introspection, and then we still just want to throw mud. So I'm gonna use the rest of my council comments to apologize to our residents. Apologize that we can't get out of our own way. Apologize that we can't respect each other. Apologize that we can't respect them to do the job that we were elected to do, to ask the questions, the hard questions, to dig deep and find out information so that we can make the best decisions possible. I'm offended, and I'm hurt. And it just doesn't seem to end. We have real issues at hand that's going to affect us and every resident here in the town of Bloomfield. Let's stop trying to tear each other down and respect each other, the differences, the similarities. If we can't govern, if we can't ask questions, if we can't agree to disagree and do that respectfully, then we're all wasting our time. Because no matter what you want to make the narrative out to be, there are smart, intelligent people out there that sees exactly what's going on. Thank you.
I usually don't have too much to say in these things, and I'm gonna try to be brief tonight, but I have to say that this meeting was an embarrassment. It started, it started in public comments, and I, I, I don't even, it would just continue to go off the rails from there. Um, tonight was a good example of everything that's wrong in Bloomfield politics right now. And the divisions that lie among us and continue to escalate as we go, as we continue to move on. It doesn't get better. It gets worse. I did not participate in the council retreat. I had to, I was, I did have an obligation to work that day. But to be honest with you, I didn't really see a whole lot of point. I've been to, I've participated in three before that to no avail. Um, and it continues to get worse, and I believe this is going to continue to get worse because it's an election year. And everybody has to thump their chest and stand out and be the ones that are a- above everybody else and continue to divide because that's the easiest way to win elections. Um, and I think I probably gonna leave here tonight, and I probably will shed a tear for this town tonight. This was an absolute embarrassment from beginning to end. And I'm ashamed to be up here for it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, um, I think there's a, there's a lot of truth in uh, what um, Counselor Politis just said. This meeting, you know, if, if the divisions were already clear, uh, it's, the, this meeting made them uh, very, very clear. You know, I just it, it's, it's disappointing that it feels like the, the safest thing to do is to just not say anything at all during these meetings. Um, but then you're completely disregarding the individuals, the people that went out and voted and elected you to do exactly what you're doing. It's whether it's asking questions or airing your concerns. Why it feels like it's the, the safest thing to do is to not say anything? It's because, as Counselor Debeethan Brown said, you know, everything that is said is almost like gasoline and matches being thrown. Not that the intentions of folks are wrong in initially what they're saying, but how it's being received is causing a, a lot of the, a lot of the issues that are, that are happening here. Where we have folks that have good intentions, that just want to do the job that they were elected to do. They just want to represent their constituents, represent their neighbors. But instead, they're demonized. They're disregarded. I'm hoping that as we move forward, we can build bridges, not continue to burn them. I understand we're all individuals here, but we're a team. And that team is for Bloomfield. That's the job that we were elected to, to do whatever's best for this town. And how we do that all looks different. We all have different ways of displaying that. But I think what we need to do is appreciate each other as individuals and the strength that we all bring to the table and stop resorting to fighting or to belittling. I'm hoping as we move forward, especially as we go into this budget season, because as the town manager noted, it's a, it's a tight budget. You know, this is definitely a tough time for a lot of folks with inflation, with wages not keeping up with the pace of infa- of inflation, with our town and, and the, our neighbors needing help more than ever. And we just had that incident with the crisis fund. I'm hoping that as we go into our budget season, season, that we can learn to I guess be a bit more forgiving, to look past our differences and look towards a path of building something to move forward. Our town is depending on us, and they're watching us intently. Some of them are laughing, some are shaking their heads, and some will be shedding a tear with Counselor Politis after this meeting. But it's our duty to make sure that we're doing a job that our town can be proud of, in whatever fashion or form that looks like. But we need to stop tearing each other apart. We're here for one reason, and that's for Bloomfield. And as soon as we look beyond ourselves and understand, appreciate, and receive that common goal, I think the differences that we think are so huge will become a lot smaller compared to, to the objective that we have to accomplish. So with that, uh, we're gonna go into executive session. I thought I was gonna say goodnight. Goodnight to the folks at home. Um, it looks like we have a, an empty uh, uh, chamber here um, besides the counselors. So have a good night. I'm hoping in the next meeting we can be a bit better and um, looking forward to executive session. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first want to say thank you to the um, Bloomfield Green Warhawks for um, advocating and organizing um, to come out to let their needs be heard. It was so I'm hopeful to hear the uh, young people who came up tonight to speak, to advocate. Um, that's our next generation. Um, I do um, want to rest assured that um, and provide an update, most of the council got it. But if you're at home and you've heard about the Silicon Valley Bank um, and the Signature Bank in New York, um, the town has $4 million invested in the Baker Group. Um, but we do not um, have any um, material losses um, from the Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank. I guess disaster or the losing their money. Um, so the money that we do have is below, and our portfolio is below the $250,000 threshold. Um, and so if we were impacted, we would have uh, received our money back. Um, I want to let uh, people know, please be safe. Um, there's a winter storm coming. I hope you stay safe. Um, Stanley, I don't know if we're going to open up the uh, the uh, no parking ban, but if we are, please make sure we communicate that to the public. And then if, oh, it's already is, thank you, uh, Director of Strategic and Government Relations for that update. And then if we're opening our warm-in centers in case there- And then if we're opening our warm in centers in case there is power outage, um, is there a plan for power outages and for seniors who uh may be impacted? Um, if so, I'm sure the Director of Strategic Communications and Government Relations will communicate that to the public. Um, be safe and good night.
Council Mayor.
Yeah, I uh I don't wanna preach and I like to be brief, but um I'm not really upset about the behavior of this council. I, democracy is a very uh can, can you, you, you get into these ego conflicts and uh I, it doesn't bother, it's going on in Washington all the time and it's, it's when you have democracy, you have this. It's just part of the game. Um, we have some challenges. Uh, I don't think, uh, I, I think Mr. Hawthorne has left us in good shape. He's done a great job restraining spending this last year, which it puts us in a much better position budget wise than I thought we were. I was really worried a year ago. I'm not so worried today. Um, he's, he's probably bo- boosted our reserves up and uh he's, he's by restraining spending, he's left us in good shape. So I'm I'm a lot happier about that. We've, we've had a problem in accounting, not Finance Director, but accounting, where we have uh had some late um audits and that apparently is true of a lot of different towns now. It's, we're not unique in that. For some reason, there are a lot of them having trouble, but we're having particular problems because we're understaffed and we have been had trouble hiring people to do that. So that's an ongoing problem. The other ongoing problem has been our reserves, but I, I, I think we're probably in much better shape than I thought we were going to be. And I appreciate the job he's done in making that happen. So I'm, I haven't seen the budget, so I'm looking forward to seeing it. I don't think it matters. Uh, I'm, I'm not upset about the what the Board of Ed's looking for. We, we shared them a couple million dollars last year, so I, I, and they had to cut back on teachers and I think they don't wanna do that, so they're asking for an eight point eight percent increase and I would, I would suspect they need it if you really wanna have the number of teachers that they think we should have to have quality education in Bloomfield. So I'm, I think we're in pretty good shape and uh I think people expected tax increase and I think they're good one, but may not be as big as I thought it was gonna be. So I'm very encouraged by that. And I would uh I, I'm not upset with anybody tonight about their behavior, so I'm used to this. I, I've been around for a number uh town managers and a number of councils and I've seen awful lot of uh displays. And I, I get worried when everybody agrees with each other, so I, I'm, I'm used to this. And Bloomfield, back in the thirty, forty, fifty years ago, we had the same thing, so it, it's not concerning. And I think we'll all come together in the end and I think everybody cares about the town and uh so I'm looking forward to the budget and the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I want to give thanks to Cindy Lloyd and the uh ARPA group for uh putting in the time and the energy to uh allow our residents a voice in the way in which the ARPA funds will potentially be distributed. Uh, I'd also like to acknowledge the uh Bloomfield Raiders. Um, uh, it is a young uh group uh al- along with the cheer, cheering group that we definitely needed to support and I'm thankful that uh we agreed to provide support to them. The Bloomfield Raiders, excuse me, Bloomfield Warhawks, boy, um they were two teams, they're now one. My apologies, sincere apologies. Um, I'm very happy in one sense that Capital Warfare Partners has saw fit to consider our town again for uh some summer dollars that will help uh educate and potentially employ some of our youth in this community. There's ten million dollars that the governor is distributing throughout the state and C W P has contacted our town to participate. So we're very hopeful that A, we can continue with the Summer Bridge Program and B, that we can expand uh some of our services that we provide for our youth. In terms of tonight's discussion, uh again, I, I try uh uh, I'm not a conflict oriented person. Uh, I do read emails and I do detect certain tones. And I think they're dismissive. I think they're disrespectful at times. And I just feel that we should do a better job at trying to talk to each other in a more respectful manner. Um, I don't think it needs to get to these points. Um, and maybe caucusing more will provide that, but I, I believe that the town manager has done an exceptional job. Others may feel differently, but I, my experience, I feel he has done a very good job. And I do not appreciate the tone that is relegated to him during these discussions because he doesn't deserve that. But at any rate, I hope you all are safe during uh this snowy element. And uh I wish you all the best and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I will be brief, just a, a couple of things. Uh, first, I wanted to recognize, I believe it was last Friday, we had a staff appreciation day. And unfortunately, what we sort of lose sight of in all these meetings with all this bickering and an inability to, to get along and to do the business is that we forget to really uh give thanks and pay honor to the folks who kind of keep the lights on and, and keep everything going in town. So I really wanna take a moment to uh thank our staff uh who I believe do a tremendous job uh supporting our residents. Um, for me, tonight's meeting has become almost par for the course. Uh, I, I can't tell you, I'm just gonna be totally transparent. I don't wanna come to these meetings. You know, I'm turned off. Uh, I don't wanna be around with some of my colleagues uh because they won't accept any responsibility for where we are. Where I come from, it's all about accountability. You can't just say stuff. You gotta do it, you gotta act the way that you talk, right? So everyone is playing a victim, but no one is being accountable for their own actions. Do this, this meeting is this, this is that. What are you doing that contributes to the issue? The fact that we are not getting along. I did not sign up to be on a council, to be in a body that we are ineffective. Uh, we have some important issues. We've got our budget, we've got our audit. We've got a town manager search that's upcoming and all we do is waste time going at one another. Um, I, I just can't tell you how frustrating it is to hear everyone, not everyone, but a lot of my colleagues all pointing fingers and saying this, saying that, but what they do doesn't does not uh match up with what they say. Um, I, I also wanted to say something about fiscal responsibility. Uh, I was a little disappointed and don't get me wrong, I support the Warhawks. But they initially came in and asked for thirty to forty thousand dollars. Then they came into our admin and ed meeting last week and asked for eighty. We gave them forty or, or the uh, the committee, excuse me, finance, I believe, uh, agreed to forty. And then tonight, we say, let's just give them eighty thousand dollars because they asked for it. We haven't seen a detailed budget. I don't know what their true expenses are. We saw a couple of spreadsheets. But I also know that many of my colleagues are gonna argue and stomp about not raising our military, right? They don't wanna see our taxes go up, but they want, okay, let's just give them eighty thousand dollars because they asked for it. The Board of Ed asked for eight percent, so let's give them eight percent. And my concern is about how it's going to impact the citizens of Bloomfield. And I think our job is to roll up our sleeves and to look into these numbers and not just give out money because we like it or it's a political season and all this stuff is, it's so frustrating because in my opinion, we are not doing our job. Uh, if you get a group of people to just come in and, and hit you with requests and you just do it because you, you want their support, you like them or whatever it is, that's not reason enough to give them all that money without some concrete evidence as to how that money's gonna be spent. There's no uh ownership on them to raise any money. We're just gonna give them every dollar they need. I mean, I wouldn't even do that with my kids. They gotta earn some money to go towards the cost of whatever they need. And again, uh, I just know when we get to the budget and we talk about tax increases, people are gonna say, no, no, no tax increases, but here it is, let's set the tone as to how we're gonna go about that season. And I just hope that we can come with an open mind. We always talk about, you know, our tone and our tenor, but people say it, but you'll hear it or you'll read it and we don't do that. And I think if we took some time and did some introspection and looked at ourselves and say, how am I contributing to this dysfunction? It may be helpful, but until every person on this council can be accountable to themselves and say, I own some of this, we are not gonna go anywhere. And I am so looking forward to this term ending because this council cannot exist with this body together because it's just not working, hasn't worked from the beginning and it's not gonna work again. And I'm just, uh, I'm embarrassed being a representative of this council in our community because the community expects so much more from us. But time and again and again and again, we feed into the myth that we primarily people color cannot do the job that we were voted in to do because of whatever the issues are and I apologize to our residents. Uh, I truly am sorry that we are not doing w- we were elected to do on behalf of you. Thank you. And myself included, I own some of that too. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I wanna say, uh, and then we'll move on. Good evening and I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight to advocate on behalf of themselves, the town. I think we have fourteen attendees watching us right now, so you know, the new Monday night entertainment apparently. Um, I don't wanna discourage our residents from coming out here and addressing the council. I think that tonight we saw a lot of great comments and a lot of, maybe everyone didn't like the delivery, but we cannot discourage our citizens from coming out here to address the legislative body with passion or impassioned or however the delivery is, it's our job to listen and and, and that's, that's our role. I, I'm really proud of the Junior Warhawks for continuing to show up in all of the subcommittees and the town council committees and advocating on behalf of their families and their friends and, you know, the community in which they serve. So I'm extremely uh encouraged and I hope they come out to different, not just tonight, but more so uh moving forward into our budget season. Our budget season is the most or the most important thing that this body can do. And so I encourage everyone that's on the line now and everyone that came out today to continue to weigh in on our very important budget um session that has to happen between March and April. It's very critical. I think it's very important to to go forward as a body with civil discourse, saying what we wanna say. And I encourage everyone to continue to ask the questions and continue to say, but there is a time and a place to ask those questions. And I think if we do it with respect with each other, and I'm talking to everyone, including myself, I think we can move forward and get through one of the toughest budget seasons that we, that we have ahead of us. But we are going in there with a strong fiscal position. I am, I'm encouraged by the balanced budget that I have yet to see, but reporting out to the town manager, I'm encouraged by the many different community members that have come out and advocated in order to be heard in the budget and how we dispose and, and allocate funds throughout the community. But I think that off camera and on camera, we have to have respect for each other. And I am determined to lead in that way. But to get respect, you have to give respect. And one thing that I have always been is very disciplined as it relates to how I run meetings and how and when to ask the appropriate questions. And I will not stop because community members can come to lecture us or community members feel like they don't wanna see that. This is, this is who we are. And I agree with the Deputy Mayor. I, I don't quite look forward to coming to these meetings. And I think that can change because we are volunteers. I have children waiting at home. We both have, we all have family waiting at home. And it'll be an interesting, um, it'll be an interesting year. But I think we're all working very hard to fight for the things we believe in, each and every one of us, all nine of us. And so um you know, what I can take accountability for, I absolutely do. Feel free to call me, text me, have coffee. I'm open to all of that. But I will demand respect on behalf of my council members, the town manager staff and leadership. We have to move forward better off camera and on camera and how we respond and communicate via email. With that, uh, do I have a motion to move into executive session with the town attorney, the town manager, the assistant town manager, the full council and Attorney Bill Ryan? Moved by Counselor Harrington, seconded by Counselor Mahan. We will be staying in this uh session and so we'll have to remove all of our current attendees. So Counselor Merritt, please stay on the line and someone can please poke um Attorney Ryan that we are ready to proceed in executive session to discuss the concerning pending claims and litigation and can, discussion concerning employee pension related claims. And for our attendees that are on the line, thank you for staying with us. I, yeah, I'll go ahead and there they go. Um, if the council would like maybe three minutes of personal privilege to go to the restroom, we'll convene as soon as Attorney Ryan gets on.